July 17, 2018. I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we call on Council Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Ices.
We are in the midst of summer now, and as with most good things, there's not much to complain about. The tomatoes are being sold on the side of the road and in the farmer's markets. We are grateful for the sunshine that turns them red and for the sandwiches stick with them we make at home. Summer brings simple pleasures when we take time to notice them. The rain, which we need, and the gentle breezes bring relief from the heat, and those too are good things. There has been dancing and music around here, too, lately, at the pop-up parties, at concerts in the park, and by the campers and councilors at Camp Green Leaves. It is good to see people having fun and celebrating the good things we can do with and for each other. Our staff and employees are being recognized with awards by others who have no bias in doing so. And in their wisdom, the leaders of our country want us to recognize especially the role that recreation plays in our city. We would not be the same place without it. Summer calls us to relax and have fun, and we are glad to oblige. Yet even amidst our gratitude for these many blessings, we still petition. We ask for guidance and wisdom as we go about our city's business. Remind this council and all of our employees to take time to rekindle our spirits and refresh our outlook. Keep our citizens healthy and safe, and bless all of us with patience, understanding, and kindness. Amen.
It's an exciting evening tonight. We have quite a few recognitions. We're going to start things off recognizing recreation and parks, and I'm going to call forward Tony Watson. If you'd like to tell us a little about Recreation and Parks Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here. And July is always the National Park and Recreation Month nationwide, and we're very proud to be a part of that here in our city. And we are absolutely proud of our Recreation and Parks program here. And I want to start out by thanking our city council, present city council, and all the predecessors that I have worked under, and I've been here a couple of years. But we've had tremendous support from our city council to give us not only quality parks and facilities, but money to do great programs. And we're very thankful and grateful for that because our citizens here provide a good quality of life experience for them, something to get away from their everyday humdrum work problems, whatever else, and get out and enjoy themselves, whatever they like to do. We have a very diversified program, try to do something for all ages. I used to, a few years ago, when we had cemetery and grounds, I used to say, "We take you from birth to death, and then we plant you." We don't have cemetery and grounds anymore, so can't plant you anymore, but we still carry you all the way on the journey. But anyway, we do appreciate all our support, and our city staff, city manager, and all the city staff and all the city departments that help us every day, day in and day out, doing a lot of the things that make our facilities really good and take care of things that we can't handle on our own. So we're very grateful for them, too. And I wanted to point out real quick, this is a perfect example, this wasn't planned, but we have a wonderful young group of young ladies here that just accounted for themselves very well on the national scene. And they come out through a soccer program here that's sponsored by our Burlington Soccer Club. Probably most of them started out playing in our recreation program when they were a little younger, and we're very, very proud of you ladies. And I know you're going to be recognized in a minute, but I just wanted to tell you how much I'm happy what your accomplishments were, and we're very proud of what you've done, and congratulate you on your performance. So that's a good sight like that we have here as part of our recreation program, these young ladies, and all their coaches and parents and soccer club administrators here to support them.
Tony, if you could join me up here. As Tony mentioned, recreation parks is a very important part of our community, and it's my honor on behalf of the city council to proclaim July 2018 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Burlington. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Burlington, North Carolina. And whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important in establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities to aid in the prevention of chronic diseases, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally and physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative offers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, now therefore the Burlington City Council hereby proclaims July as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Burlington. Congratulations. Thank you for you and your staff's hard work. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate it. It's now my honor to call forwards Coach Steve Harrison.
Mayor Valtudis, city council members, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm not going to take very long, but I would like to thank all of you very much for recognizing the accomplishments of this group of amazing young ladies that I had the pleasure to coach this year. The city should be super, super proud of all of them. We made it to, you know, a level of play that I didn't think we could get to, and not only did we do that, we competed so well. Played about as well as we were capable. Results didn't go quite our way, but I was just talking to our director of coaching here and our executive director, and I told them if we went back up this week and played them again, the results might be completely different. But they represented the city of Burlington and North Carolina extremely well. I would also like to just take a second to thank not only the city council, but the entire city of Burlington, who rallied around us as we were trying to fundraise to make sure that we could make this trip affordable for everybody. So on behalf of me, myself, the club, our team, thanks to everybody. I'd like to ask each one of the girls to stand up, if that's okay, and introduce themselves and let you guys know which school they go to.
Sure.
I'm Melissa Cameron, and I go to Southern Middle School.
I'm Samantha Walker, and I go to the Burlington School.
I'm Emma Brown, and I go to the Burlington Christian Academy.
I'm Clara Eisen, and I'm from the school.
I'm Hannah, and I go to Southern Allman's High School.
I'm Sierra Call, and I go to Western Allman's High School.
I'm Howard Corning, and I go to Boys' High School.
My name is Carla Murphy, and I go to Eastern Allman's.
I'm Lily Morrison, and I go to Hallbridge.
I'm Allison May, and I go to the Burlington School.
Kaylee Carter, I go to Southern Allman's High School.
I'm Alex Carter, I go to the Burlington Southern Allman's High School.
I'm Alicia Hall, area of Charlotte's High School.
Coach, if you'd join me up here. It's my honor on behalf of the city council to recognize you and your team with this special proclamation for claiming and recognition of Burlington Soccer Club U-15 Cardinal Girls. Whereas the Burlington Soccer Club facilitates confidence, stability, and teamwork for youth soccer players in Allman's County and surrounding areas. The club provides a fun and engaging environment for maximizing skill development and a lifelong love of the game. And whereas under the direction and leadership of Coach Steve Harrison and Coach Tiffany Rodman, is Coach Rodman here? Okay. The dedication, determination, and perseverance led the U-15 Cardinal Girls team to many victories. And whereas the U-15 Cardinal Girls finished 8-0-1 in the regular season, fall 2017. And whereas U-15 Cardinal Girls won the North Carolina Kefler Cup in November 2017, beating Wake FC 4-2 in the final. And whereas the U-15 Cardinal Girls went on to qualify for the Regional Presidents' Cup June 2018 in Greenville, South Carolina, resulting in a 4-0 win versus Mississippi, 7-0 win versus Alabama, and 4-1 loss versus North Texas. And whereas the team then qualified for the semifinal as the wild card, resulting in 3-0 wins versus Arkansas, and a rematch with North Texas with final 4-1 victory. And whereas the team then qualified for the National Presidents' Cup in Indianapolis, Indiana, July 12 through 15, 2018, finishing fourth in the nation after completely competing with teams from Illinois, Pennsylvania, and Nevada. Now therefore, the Burlington City Council does hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to extend this proclamation in recognition of the Burlington Soccer Club U-15 Cardinal Girls for their accomplishments and proud representation of the city and state in the national competition. The city of Burlington congratulates you not only on your performance at the National Presidents' Cup, but on the commitment, sacrifice, and determination you've shown while enhancing your skills in the months and years you spent preparing for it. Congratulations. We have a copy of this for the entire team, and we're going to ask you all to come up and represent us.
Mayor, for every UT, if we could recognize the parents, I can tell you, that's quite a journey for the parents over this period of time. The parents could rise, please.
You ready? Okay, one, two, three, smile. Keep smiling. One more time. All right, now let the parents get pictures.
Like I mentioned at the start of our meeting, it's a good night when we have an overflow of good folks to recognize, so we appreciate everyone's patience in working with us. Our next recognition, I'd like to call on City Manager Harden Watkins.
I'm going to ask Assistant Police Chief Chris Burdak to stand up and maybe come to the podium. So this is Chris Burdak. This is going to be, Chris is the last city council meeting. He retires at the end of this month after a little over 19 years of service with the city of Burlington. He's our assistant chief.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
George J. in there.
I'm at four. So my notes say 1989, but I didn't do math correctly. So we'll call it 29-plus years of service. Sorry about that, Chris. So Chris began here in 1989 with Burlington Police Department, and he has, those of you who've seen, there's a nice article in the Times News this week. Chris has had the opportunity to literally work in every division of Burlington Police Department during his career. Starting off, obviously, as most folks do, was an officer in the patrol division, had a chance to move to the traffic division, and was a founding member of the newly formed Selective Enforcement Team. And you're going to hear this theme as I go through this, of him having a chance to start some new and exciting things here. He was later promoted to corporal and was selected to help begin the city's community policing initiative. While doing that, he had the opportunity to create, North Carolina helped create North Carolina's first junior police academy, and had the honor to go to receive national recognition for that up in Washington, D.C. at the National Crime Prevention Conference early in his career. And those of you who are following things happening in Burlington now, obviously, the Junior Police Academy is still thriving and is just a wonderful, wonderful program with lots of amazing success stories still serving teens in our community. In 1998, he was promoted to sergeant, and then later went over to the Vicent Organized Crime Unit. He also had worked in the patrol team there, as staff sergeant, supervised the community policing unit, supervised a reinstituted and new traffic team back during that time, and then had a chance also to supervise and manage Allman's County's first undercover school operation, which led to a high number of arrests and trying to get a handle on illegal sale of narcotics on school property. 2004, he was promoted to lieutenant, transferred to operations, and then became captain, spent time in the criminal investigation division, had the chance to supervise school resource officers and our dare officers, and got to see implementation of the department's first internet crimes against children's team. At some point, Chris came back to the operations bureau, served as division commander, and then 2011, was promoted to assistant chief. And during that, and also been lots of success there, and those of you who are out in the community see Chris in the community know that he's served in a very capable manner, does a lot of our media relations now. But he's also had some neat opportunities along the way, served as crisis negotiator, he's been the commander of our special response team, and just had a wonderful career of being able to touch so many different parts of the department. He works well with other city departments, he works well with the community, has amazing relationships across the state, across the county, and across the various cities here in Allman's County as well, and even our federal agencies in terms of being able to coordinate resources. Those of you who know Chris know that he's dedicated to Burlington Police Department, he's dedicated to the city of Burlington. He's got a wonderful track record, as I said, of working cooperatively with other agencies and with other city departments. I've observed firsthand his very close relationships that he's built with our local media. Unfortunately, when we're thrown together, oftentimes it has been some sort of crisis or something bad has happened on the criminal side, and to watch Chris work with the media has been quite amazing, honestly. He's also, along the way, developed a world of contacts across the community and has used those to the betterment of the city, been able to draw on his contacts that he's built during his 29 years here. Chris has amplified service to the community and has made it his life work to make his little corner of the world a better place, and he has absolutely done that. And so, Chris, on behalf of all our citizens, on all your fellow employees, and everybody who cares about Burlington, we want to thank you, and I would ask the audience to join me in a wonderful round of applause for our amazing performance.
It's truly been an honor and a pleasure for me to be able to serve with this great police department and this awesome city, and this is the only corner of the world. Burlington's everything. I moved here in 1988, and I've made it my home, and this is it. This is the greatest place to be. And the citizens, the other city staff, everybody's been really great to work with, and thank you for the opportunity to do what I did. And now it's time for me to get out of the way and let some younger guys spread their wings and show their innovation, and let's move this to even another level. So thank you, and it's been my pleasure.
Chris, tell them a little bit before you came here what you did.
I served in the military with the 82nd Airborne right out of high school. When I got out of the Army, I went back to Minnesota, think, make a career of drilling water wells in Minnesota. It's not the best choice. [laughter] I made really good money, but it was really cold in the winter times.
How many jumps did you jump, Scott?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two jumps, Scott.
That's why I've had three back surgeries. But it's been amazing. I got a job with Schwan's Ice Cream. They moved me back down here. They asked me if I'd want to relocate to North Carolina, and I said, "Yeah, I've been there before, we can go back." So we came back down here, and I spent a year with them, and then I got hired with the police department, and that's where I've been ever since, and it's really been, it's been an honor and a privilege, and I've loved every minute of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
For our next recognition, I'd like to call on Water Resources Director Bob Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Today, we have a recognition, an award that our Ed Thomas Plant received, but I did want to take the opportunity to introduce and recognize all of our operations leaders at both plants. We have, and they'll stand up here. Eric Davis is our assistant director over plant operations. Please stand there. I'm going to jump for a second. Dennis Thomas is our McIntosh Chief Operator. And then next to Dennis is Hank Trent. He is the chief operator at the Ed Thomas Plant. And his two very highly trained, capable assistants are here, Todd Hopkins and Brent These guys here have decades of water treatment experience, very highly trained, very highly certified, and make it their job every day to provide the best water they can to the city. We were recently recognized by the Public Water Supply Section of North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, which participates in a U.S. EPA program across multi-states, and it's called AWOP, which stands for Area-Wide Optimization Program. Essentially, this focuses on turbidity removal in the treatment process, and specifically settled water and filtered water. So when the water is brought in from the lakes, it's dirty, it has sediment in it, there's some silt and other particulates that make it appear cloudy, and that also includes some contaminants and whatnot. So it goes through the treatment process, and turbidity is a measure of the clearness or cloudiness of the water column based on the way light travels through a column of water. And those particulates can affect the turbidity. And generally, these are particles that are naked, or you can't be seen with the naked eye. You have to use instrumentation to measure it. And this program recognizes water treatment plants that achieve a superior level of treatment for turbidity removal beyond the current stringent levels that are already set by the state and federal regulations. And as I said, raw water's taken from the lake, brought into the treatment process, and we add aluminum sulfate, and it goes through a flocculation and sedimentation process to remove that initial cloudiness and material. And currently, there's no set limits for what the turbidity is supposed to be once it reaches that initial settling process. The regulations kick in on the finished water before it's sent out to the distribution system. The AWOP program, Area-Wide Optimization Program, sets some guidelines or goals for that settled water, and basically, it's a function of how dirty the water is to start with. They want it reduced so that if the water is, and it's measured in nephelometric turbidity units, just call it a unit, or an NTU. So if the water is pretty cloudy, which is over 10 NTUs, they would like it to be 95% of the time, less than two NTUs, which is pretty clear to the naked eye. And if it starts out clearer and it's less than 10, then they want it 95% of the time, down to one NTU, which is very clear to the naked eye. And then, as I said, the filtered water has federal regulations. We have to get to .3 NTUs before we send it to the distribution system. And this program establishes a guideline of less than .1 NTU, 95% of the time, again. And so, when the state looked at our data for the last year, they recognized the Ed Thomas Plant for meeting these regulations. And what's key to this is that those goals of providing that higher level of treatment is linked through the research to having greater removal of cryptosporidium and giardia, which is linked to illnesses and can be hidden in that turbidity. So this provides, you know, more high-quality water. So again, I'd like to recognize our staff for their efforts, and if anybody would like to add anything or correct what I said.
[laughter] You say no, I'm not. Yeah. And we thank you all for trusting us with what we do, working for, appreciate recognizing this as well.
Excellent, thank you.
For our final recognitions this evening, I'm going to call on Council, our city manager, Harden Watkins, and Fire Chief Jay Smith.
So I'm going to let Chief Smith do most of the talking from the podium, but what I wanted to share this evening with our colleagues that are here to be recognized. So we had an incident on June 19 at 1464 Maple Avenue at the Maple Brook Apartment Complex. I wanted to recognize some folks who went above and beyond the call of duty, and I'm going to let Chief Smith provide you the details of that. But what I wanted to share with you all is, as someone who has needed, I haven't needed the services here in Burlington, but as somebody who has needed to be hauled away from the scene in an ambulance and really have their life saved, I want to thank you on behalf of folks who need your services, and we don't know, none of us know who that is on those days. But thank you all so much for what you do, and thank you for, you know, being ready and being prepared and having good training and acting when you don't have to act, on behalf of all those folks that you save on a routine and regular basis. And Chief's going to share the details of a story that's pretty amazing that happened in June. So Chief Smith.
Get Chief Lawrence to come up and then our recipients, if they will come up to the front. Come on up. Just while I'm looking up there, if you don't mind. Just while I'm looking up there, if you don't mind. So, thank you. So, what I was gonna do, just talk a little bit tonight, and then I'm gonna have Chief Lawrence read the incident, and then we'll present, Manager Watkins, I'll present you with your recognition. So, the council, I'm probably a broken record to our city council. They hear me talk about our response times and anything that impedes us getting between our fire station and a call, because the response time is so critical to saving lives and us being able to perform the duties that we need to do. On this particular day, Chief Lawrence, get it particulars, but, you know, when we got the call at the fire station, too, on Webb Avenue, our first unit rolled out going to Maple Avenue, it took 3 minutes and 47 seconds for them to get notified, get to the truck, get dressed, and respond. When they got there, it was a heavily working fire at that time. These individuals assisted in getting that resident out, and my point with all that is that even in the short amount of time that we responded, had they not done something, the outcome would have been much worse. So, at this time, I'll let Chief Lawrence talk to you a little bit about the incidents there.
Thank you, guys, for being here. The good Lord certainly puts the right people in the right places at the right times, a lot of times, and this is certainly a night we recognize that and thank these gentlemen for being that person in that place. On June 19th, 2018, almost a month ago, our department was dispatched to an apartment fire at 1464 Maple Avenue, which is part of the Maple Brook Apartment Complex operated by Burlington Housing Authority. Upon arrival, Burlington Fire Unit found heavy smoke coming from the apartment and an active fire in the kitchen of the department. Alamance County Rescue Chief Kyle Buckner and his crew of Buckner's Lawn Care, including Robert Layton, who's an off-duty Carboro firefighter, Andy Kozak, an off-duty Meben firefighter, Michael Nunn, an off-duty Burlington firefighter, Ryan Stout, a Sweptsville volunteer firefighter, Stephen Shaw, a Meben volunteer firefighter, and Preston Yao were on-site at Maple Brook Apartments performing work for Burlington Housing Authority when they saw smoke coming from the building. Each of these individuals, in some capacity, including reporting the fire, jumped into action to address the emergency. Several members of this crew heard cries from help coming from the apartment, and given their firefighting experience, tried to enter the apartment to locate the trapped victim. Experiencing heavy smoke inside the apartment from the rear, members of this team forced entry into the front door of the apartment, where they were able to communicate with the occupant, Mrs. Crystal Streep, who was disoriented and trapped on the second floor of the apartment. They were able to direct Miss Streep to follow her voice, slide down the stairs through the thick smoke, and get her safely to the exterior and out of harm's way prior to our arrival. Given the conditions present, it's certain that the result of this incident could have been much different. It's clear that the actions of these men had a positive impact on the amount of damage to the apartment, and certainly helped save the life of Miss Crystal Streep. It's our pleasure tonight to have them in our presence, and also their families and their leaders from their respective departments, to be recognized for their actions. Tonight, we have merely certificates for them, certificates of commendation, which basically reads, "In recognition of his actions on June 19th, 2018, which helped save the life of a citizen of the city of Burlington." So, I'll give this to Chief Smith and be presented to these fine gentlemen for their work on June 19th. Robert Layton. Also, we have Ryan Stout and Preston Yao, who were not able to be with us tonight. We'll find an opportunity to award them with their certificate as well. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, yeah.
What we'd like for their family and friends and their department, and then stand up. I appreciate it.
Next item on our agenda, we recognize our City Clerk Renee Ward.
It's the Council's responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. At this time, I ask of the area potential conflicts with the community.
Before Council, our minutes from the June 4th, 2018 City Council Work Session, the June 19th, 2018 City Council Special Meeting, and the June 19th City Council Meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes have been approved. Before Council is the agenda, do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda has been adopted. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to designate Roger Meisenbach as an alternate member of the Public Transit Advisory Commission, with a term that expires in 2021. Item B, Budget Amendment 2019-1, Animal Services Donation, the details of which are spelled out in your agenda. Item C, Budget Amendment 2019-2, Economic Development Grant, NC Biotech, the details of which are also spelled out in your agenda. Item D, Budget Amendment 2019-3, Fiscal Year 2017, 18 Projects Carried Forward. These are spelled out in the attached revised budget amendment with the corrections highlighted. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. We have one item of unfinished business this evening. City Council will consider an application to rezone from R15 Residential District to CR Conditional Residential District for the use of a 241-mot, single-family subdivision. The property is located at 1722 Shamrock Drive, referenced as Alamance County Tax identification number 130754. This is on appeal. The item was continued from June 19th, 2018 City Council Meeting. The public hearing was held and has been closed. At this time, we recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. As you'll recall, this rezoning request comes to you with the recommendation of staff. Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending denial of the request by a vote of six to one due to resident concerns. A public hearing was held before this council on June 19th, as you just stated, and Mr. Lawson Brown is here to request a continuance.
Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, at your direction, we have undertaken negotiation with the neighbors who are represented by Mr. Frank Longus. We've made several moves in the right direction. We would respectfully request some additional time. Mr. Longus has a conflict for your next meetings in August, so we would request respectfully September 4th to see if we can come back with a compromise that will make everyone happy.
Any questions from council regarding that? Do I hear a motion to move the item to September 4th?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. New business, we have two items this evening. City Council will consider setting a date of public hearing for the adoption of the city of Burlington's Code of Ordinances rewrite, this time to recognize City Attorney David Hoppert.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this evening, we're requesting that you set a date of public hearing for the consideration of adopting the Code of Ordinance comprehensive rewrite. We ask that you set the date for August 21. In doing so, it will allow us to comply with NCGS 168-364A as far as publication for the notice requirements for this. We anticipate that at the end of your August 21, if you set that date, that you're having an opportunity to vote on it then or continue to vote over to a time, another time certain, but otherwise, we would suggest possibly at that time that October 1 be the effective date of this rewrite. Mr. Mayor, if I could, I want to thank a couple people first, but Ginger Booker is here, Miss Booker from the, she has been the one, as you all know, who has headed this project up from the time that Mr. Bateman was the city attorney, and she has, she's such a workhorse, and I just want to let you know that I'm amazed at how well she works and how well she works with these individuals here, and thank them also, the staff, particularly the department heads. They have done a masterful job in going through this code and rewrite, and thank them. I think implementation of these new codes will be very much enhanced because they were so involved on the front end of this. And Charles Bateman, who of course is not here, but he also brought his wisdom to the table every month as we study this thing, and we want to thank him, too. Mr. Mayor, once we, once this, anticipate that once this is voted on by the council, that we will be able to implement this thing, as I said, certainly by October 1. By doing it October 1, it will give staff an opportunity to go back through and make whatever needed changes, as far as policies are concerned, for the easy implementation of it.
Any questions from council, or do I hear a motion to set the date of public hearing?
Set the date of public hearing August 21st, right, Dave?
Correct, correct.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to set public hearing for August 21st? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? If public hearing has been set.
Mr. Mayor, let me do note that you have a hard copy, each of you has a hard copy. We will be providing a hard copy to the press here, as well as it's going to be posted online by the end of this week, so the public can certainly, and of course, by statute, the city clerk will have a copy in her office for public viewing.
And we request public feedback that's a critical point in making sure these ordinances are effective in the community, so we look forward to that public hearing and any public feedback at the time. And this will, we hope, continue to be a living document and continue to evolve this as the city evolves going forward. All right? Thank you. Item three on our agenda, City Council will consider adopting an ordinance to approve a traffic commission recommendation for a request for a four-way stop at the intersection of Avon Avenue and Cameron Street. This time, we recognize City Traffic Engineer Jason Gary.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This was a simple four-way stop request at Cameron Street and Avon. Cameron Street currently has stop condition, Avon is free-flow condition. This did not meet the warrants of the MUTCD multi-way stop guidelines, but of course, that's purely quantitative numbers. Chief Smith spoke to the commission about the need for the neighborhood to have the four-way stop, you know, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic. It's an area that needs some attention from police, and so with those things in consideration, the commission, but unanimously, they'll approve the four-way stop, so if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer anything.
Any questions from council? Do I hear a motion to approve the four-way stop?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. For a number of staff reports this evening, the first staff report regards the enhancement and enforcement of the Burlington zoning ordinance, Section 32.10, outdoor tire storage. At this time, we recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you. Basically, what I want to do is just give a little update, a review of what's going on with this, also to bring attention to the public for this. I know it's been long-awaited. You adopted it at your February 6th meeting, and we're trying to improve aesthetics and promote safety in the city. The ordinance provides standards concerning the display and storage, the outdoor storage of tires in particular. Minimize visual impact and reduce potential for a public nuisance and fire hazard. That's all part of the reasons why we worked so hard and a very long time developing this ordinance, looked at other communities, and I will just go through and just briefly review what the ordinance itself says. Tires must be stored in a completely fenced-in area concealed from view from a public street and from all adjacent property through screening. Examples of acceptable screening are included in this. For lots greater than one acre, the outdoor tire storage area shall not exceed 10% of the entire area used for the business. Tires shall not be stored within any required yard adjacent to a street. The placement of tires stored outside shall be maintained in accordance with this ordinance and the provisions of the North Carolina Fire Code. Outdoor display of tires shall be permitted, provided they are located within 10 feet of the principal structure on the premises, and not within required setbacks or buffers. A maximum of 24 tires may be displayed, and they may, must be placed in racks in an upright position. We've had articles in the newspaper on the tire ordinance. We've had, we will be having a press release from the city. Staff has met with representatives of all known tire dealerships in the city right after the passage of the ordinance, the adoption of the ordinance, and then we explained to each dealership what the process was, what it was going to be, and what they needed to do to come into compliance. They were given copies of the ordinance, as well as an aerial photo of their property outlining where they could comply with this ordinance. We sent recently reminder letters to all the known dealerships that it's coming, because the enforcement begins on October, I mean, August 7th of this year, so it's very close. So, we wanted to give them a heads-up, again, another reminder that this is coming, and want to let the public know that the issues that they've complained about over the years are not necessarily going to be resolved on August the, October. Oh, my gosh, I can't get the month right, I am sorry. On August the 7th. But we're going to be working with the owners and workers at the dealerships to try to help them get into compliance, education and assistance as far as detailing where they can put these and how it needs to go. That's going to be what we try to do, because we want to achieve voluntary compliance. That's always our goal with enforcement. So, just wanted to give everybody a heads-up that this is coming.
Any questions from Mrs. Nelson?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next staff report is on Big Alamance Creek area study. At this time, we recognize Director of Transportation, Mike Nunn.
Good, Mayor, good evening, council. Just wanted to briefly update you, you have a memo in your pack as well, but we are beginning the investigation of this area. You recall your June 19th meeting, you had a request that sort of sparked this for city sewer services. So, we're going to be working with planning, economic development, water sewer, engineering, just sort of doing an overview of the inventory of the area, be able to provide you some information back on that request and maybe things in the future. So, we anticipate that at the October work session. We'll have a PowerPoint presentation and maybe a technical memo summarizing all the information. It can go from there. If there's other items you'd like to see at that point, we can certainly go back and include those.
Any questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a number of board and commission reports. The first one's from Planning and Zoning Commission with four requests. At this time, we recognize, again, Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you again. I will briefly review what we did at our meeting. Here is our first case, it's the Alamance West Apartments, and this request for rezoning, it's along Bonner Bridge, is for a 288-unit apartment complex. Some of the public comments concern the impact of additional traffic and safety for the children at Highland Elementary School across from the proposed at Highland Elementary School across from the proposed site, which is in the hash marks here. The developer stated that they were going to make road improvements to the intersection of Bonner Bridge and University Drive that would include adding an additional left-turn lane and traffic signal improvements. The developer pointed out that the traffic impact analysis for the project did not require any road improvements, but they were offering traffic improvements at their own expense in order to help mitigate traffic concerns. And the commission voted unanimously to approve this rezoning. And here is a site plan overall. And here's the aerial photo. Did anyone have any questions? This is the Burlington Athletic Stadium. It's a city request to rezone the stadium for the proposed construction of a new restroom facility and a new ticket/souvenir sales office. The property was rezoned in 1986 from R-9 Residential to I-3 Heavy Industrial because of off-premise advertising that's along the field. The map shows a portion of the property that's being rezoned. And the location of the proposed new buildings were unable to meet the setback requirements. And so we are proposing to rezone the property so that it will meet those requirements, as well as still be able to continue having the outdoor advertising. It will not change that or anything else that's with the park that people are familiar with at this time. The commission voted unanimously to approve the rezoning request. And that's very hard to see, but we will show you a very nice presentation at the meeting.
Just reference, all these are staff report items that will come before council at another date.
Correct. And the commission voted unanimously to approve, and no one spoke in opposition.
Any questions regarding that?
Do you want to collaborate about the meeting day?
Those two items, those two rezonings will be at a special meeting on the 30th of this month at 6:00 PM in this room.
Excellent. Thank you.
We also had two text amendments. The first one was to alter the table of permitted uses for the I-1A district. We are going to include, or proposing to include, schools, non-academic schools, in that list of uses for that area, commercial, vocational, public or private. It will be an indoor facility, no adverse impact on any surrounding uses, and we fully intend to incorporate this in the UDO. The last item was protest petitions. We still have that in our ordinance, even though it is invalidated by the state statutes. So what we're trying to do is clean up the ordinance, avoid any confusion, and just mirror the state statutes.
Any questions regarding any of those?
Set the date those will come for.
Those will come, and I did write it down. Those will come at the August meeting, 21st. August 21st.
Thank you. There were no reports from the traffic commission or the Public Transit Advisory Commission. This moves us to public comment period. We have one public comment. Pastor Cates, if you'd like to take a few moments.
Again, it's huge, right? First of all, I've been working and talking back and forth with the bus transit gentleman. We've never met. But since they have rerouted, so it comes down to Trauninger Street, we've seen a great improvement. We have two, I'm not sure who owns them. I think Ralph Scott owns them. These people are great people. They walk up and down the street, they shop, but mentally, they can't drive. Now we have a bus where it stops right there. It picks them up. They come downtown, they go to the library, they do their thing. And then that bus goes on around, and luckily, it stops right there at a daycare center. The daycare center's on the corner of Plaid and Pill. The mother is able to get off, pick up her children, go downtown, and then able to go do her job. And it's working out great. We've seen so much since they've rerouted where it comes down. Before, it would stop right at Trauninger Street and then turn back around. Now they've been able to -- we've had about three or four months now, and we've noticed a difference. So a meeting with the business owners and all that, we're trying now to sponsor something. Well, if you ride the bus, come see us. We'll give you a discount on your purchase. We try to get them to -- there's a lot of people. But the main thing I've seen is the senior citizens and the ones who are disabled who can't drive, and they depend on others, they're using. I see them standing right in front of Trauninger's Treasures and on the corner, and give it, and they get on it, they do their thing, they come back, and it's amazing. So first, I want to thank you for the -- at first, I didn't know if it was going to work, I'll be honest with you. But it is working great for us, and we want to thank you so much for that. The second thing I'm here for, we need a little more lighting. I've loved Duke Power for a while to put all the lights up in that Trauninger, and finally, they got tired of me, and they did it. But on Plaid Street, I have a lot of children that come. And it gets dark, real dark, especially around it. I still call it the Plaid Mill, but it's actually Gold, Toby's, many of things. And when they walk down through there, it's dark. And they come down there, and they get what we call, and the last time I was explaining to you, what's called ugly food. They come down, and they eat the watermelons, they eat the cantaloupes. And if you get a chance, go down Plaid Street beside my store. We unloaded last year, one Saturday, 538 watermelon. And the kids came out and they ate. Well, they sit down on the sidewalk. Well, the sidewalk's cracked open places. So the kids are taken care of now. They have a watermelon patch growing on top of the sidewalk. And it's got about 10 watermelons, and they're going everywhere. And it's coming out of the seeds where they ate and busting and everything else. They're coming up. So everybody's coming to Trauninger Street down the corner of Plaid and Trauninger to see the watermelon patch coming out of concrete. So I thank the children for that because we all sit out there after we did that. Now, I got to give them credit to, those teenagers. They picked over 2,000 watermelons, excuse me, 538 watermelons, and there were 2,000 tomatoes. We get what's called ugly food, we spread it out. Now, this year, we're looking forward to even getting more. We start August. But we want, we need more lighting in that area. To be honest with you, Duke Power's getting tired of me. So we was wondering if we can get more lighting from Pill Street to Plaid. Well, excuse me, Pill Street to Trauninger. If we can get more. It's lit up all the way down to elderly. Now, we get out and walk with families that they get out and do their thing. As a matter of fact, we want to even turn it into an exercise center where they come, they start Tommy's Win, they go up, they turn by Ask McCall Drug Store to go back down. But they won't go Plaid because it's dark. Now, we've cut down trees, we've cut down, cleaned up and everything, but still, they won't go that way. So we just wanted, if it's possible, if we could somehow get more lighting in that area.
I appreciate your comments. And in our budget this year, we did include LED upsets and the addition of some LED streetlights in residential neighborhoods.
Should be a can-do.
Yep. So, but your comments are noted. We appreciate your dedication to the Trauninger Business District and to that neighborhood.
Thank you so much.
Keep up the good work. That concludes our public comments.
Pastor Cates, good evening. You've got our two folks from our transportation and the traffic department tonight. So the folks that I would have called in the morning, but they just heard your remarks.
Moves us to the city council comments. Do I hear any city council comments?
I guess the bigger picture is asking the question, when is the Unified Development Ordinance going to be ready? The more focused question I have is about some signs that have been going up around the city that, to me, are -- well, there's a current expression that set my hair on fire, and that's pretty much the way I feel about a couple of the signs that I've seen in terms of size. Other things that go on with those signs that seem to be above and beyond what I think that we should be approving in signs. And I was hoping with the UDO that we would get to the sign ordinance. And I have, when I came on the council, one of the things I said to the council about being appointed to it was that I wanted to work on the UDO. And that is now three and a half years ago. So it feels like it's time for something to be happening about these signs, as well as the rest of the UDO. And the point, one of the points I want to make is we have so many of these high signs all on our corridors. I don't think people use signs the way they used to in the past. I know that when I'm traveling, I use GPS to find out what's available, or maps, or something to tell me where the restaurants are. And I make decisions that way more than I do about having the highest sign or looking at the highest sign along the highway. So that's one reason that I think that we need to bring our code up to what I think is the current situation or reality in outside advertising. I've made this point before about billboards, and now I feel like some of the signs are about the size of billboards on our city streets. And so I'm requesting that I would like us to look at the sign ordinance, at least as it regards the size of the signs, so that I would appreciate if the staff could bring us some more information about what we could do now to do something about the size of signs. And I'd also like to have some more information about the UDO.
We'll proceed with this.
Yes, we'd be glad to take a look at, you know, what we can do with signs and possibly bring something, maybe at the September work session. Or you might come in before that, Harden. We'll take a look at that, and we'll coordinate with Harden on when to come back and communicate that. But in terms of the UDO, you may remember, Module 1 was presented back in February of last year, and then we had some changeover with our consultant. So got back on track with that. And Module 2 is, we're wrapping our review up with the consultant right now. That will be coming to you in September. And then Module 3 actually begin, which is the standards, which actually gets into the sign ordinances and many other standards. That will begin late August with the consultant. He'll begin his work, and that would come in January of 19. And if we could stay on track with that, we would end up tracking more towards a May of 19 adoption. That would be the goal. You know, there's a lot of discussion that has to be had on a lot of things regarding the UDO. But that's the rough schedule that we have laid out right now. But certainly, you know, we'll be glad to take a look and see if there's specific things, like you mentioned, the size and height, that could be looked at in the interim.
One, it is possible, at the request of council, to move the sign ordinance up or to approve it by itself. Correct? We could fast-track that.
Well, we'd like to have that conversation with our consultant. But certainly, I think elements of it certainly could be done like what Ms. Hikes was talking about with, you know, size and height. But a holistic approach to the sign ordinance. One of the challenges is, you know, you're going hard and fast trying to get, you know, the elements looking at. Like right now, we're giving everything we have on Module 2. And so it's difficult to take on a whole other wholesale element at the same time. We'll do everything we can to try to meet council's expectations. You know, certainly, we'll do our best on that.
Any other questions regarding Mayor Portem Hikes's comments?
I think it's something fair in UDO. Mr. Huffman, may remember, back in 2014 when he just first became city attorney, we had a meeting with then the consultant or contractor on UDO. I remember one comment was, it took Greensboro five years. We don't want any part of that. Well, evidently, and I'm not blaming the staff for this, but evidently, there's been some real issues with the consultant and their contract person that has extended this process to where we're looking at, five years. So I would hope that going forward, whoever is in that role now, we can keep them on track to try to at least get this objective by May of 19. I knew it wasn't going to be fast, but it's beginning to stretch out now.
Other council comments or questions?
I'd like to thank Pastor Cates for his nice comments about the Link Transit System. That was, that's very much appreciated.
Building on that, for those of you who may not have heard, Link is now running until 8:00 PM on weekdays. And as a result of those later hours into the waning light of the evening, we've been upgrading bus shelters to include solar-powered LED lights. So you can see those downtown at the Worth Street stops, and those are rolling out throughout the system as we continue to invest and help move people throughout our community. The Long in Burlington is back next week, July 25, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, right here in City Hall. Great opportunity for folks to find out more about what's going on in the city, get connected and get engaged. So invite everyone, whether you're a new resident or a longtime resident, who just want to find out